This is the City of Flint's City Council Meeting. Presented by Spectacle Productions, Determined to Make a Difference. And underwritten in part by Local 370 Flint Michigan, United Association of Union of Plumbers, Pipe Fitters, Welders, and Service Tax. Pipe Fitters Union has entry level conveyors available and available at 810-720-5243. Television broadcast sponsored by the City of Flint City Council. Up next.
Meeting to order. Roll.
Mr. Mayes?
Present.
Ms. Poplar?
Present.
Mr. Nelson?
Present.
Mr. Fields?
Present.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Winfrey?
Present.
Ms. Gallaway?
Present.
Mr. Kenke?
Present.
Do you have an executive session, Ms. Wheeler?
Yes, the city attorney's office requests an executive session to discuss the following cases and since having the open meeting would have a detrimental effect, you'd ask that in a matter of City of Flint versus Lee property, seventeen dash one zero nine three five five CB, City of Flint versus Finish Line C, seventeen three five seventeen G C, and City of Flint versus Atlas seventeen three six seven one G C.
Is there a motion to go into executive session? I'm going to move this party to go into executive session based on the request of the city attorney. Roll, Madam Clark.
Point of order. Any discussion on the motion?
I'm sorry, usually we discuss executive sessions and executive sessions, but if you want to discuss going into executive session, Eric, go ahead.
Yeah, that would be the proper point of order. Motion made properly second, any discussion prior to the vote. And the reason I made a point of order on that is because I wanted to put an addition to the executive session as it relates to whoever can give me any kind of update on the proceeding that the council is in as it relates to our federal proceeding. And if we talk about it publicly, I think it would also have a detrimental effect. So every time we go into executive session under those constitutional circumstances, I want to at least give that opportunity for some to communicate briefly on what's happening. So that's my substitute to the motion on going into executive session.
Let me ask Angela, typically to go into an executive session, we have outside counsel or an attorney's office representing the request. Is there any advisement before, I mean, I'm just looking for some guidance. I mean, this is kind of an unusual.
Well, the city attorney's office wouldn't be discussing the actual case, so we wouldn't be tearing into the executive session, but I mean, I think that's really up to you on the vote, you know.
Okay. Well, then if we decide in executive session, then we'll ask those parties that aren't attuned to what's going on with the councils to leave the room. So is that fair?
That would be fair.
Mr. President, Mr. Chairman, I think the only thing is when this has happened in the past, and I can only recall maybe one other time when it's happened, the council's attorney would also have to be in the room with them. So if there's legal advice and so forth, and central attorneys, I think it begs the question, Mr. President, I don't think there's.
Well, I mean, we'll discuss that when we're done. Roll, Madam Clark.
Mr. Mayes?
Point of information.
Monica.
Is there a substitute motion on the floor? Okay, because he said that would be my substitute motion. So I'm trying to clarify what was said, and is that what's on the floor now? Because if it is, does it need to be seconded?
I looked at it as a request to go into executive, to add his issue to the executive session.
I'm just saying what he said verbally. I just want to make sure.
No, I understand. Go ahead.
I thought it was part of the discussion. What Councilman May was talking about, well, he was talking about procedure. And then as he's talking about procedure, he's saying that as before the vote, there's discussion, and that's what he had.
But can I just say his words said, "That would be my substitute motion." I just want to make sure that that's not what he meant.
I guess I did hear a second for your motion, Eric, but I'd like you to clarify it.
Yeah. Either way, I think it's going to be the same effect if, let's say, I withdraw the substitute motion and I add it in as an item that we would additionally go into executive session on and give us the opportunity as a council to be updated by some of our colleagues, which we know the attorneys ain't here, that would be a pretty explanation, and we all know what's going on. And I believe that we are in line doing that if we decide to do that. So, Mr. Chairman, I can go along with what I didn't say here, and I'm ready to vote.
Roll, Madam Clark.
I want to be sure that the public understands what we're voting on.
Right.
Now, can someone explain that, what we're voting on, the original motion?
We're, no, we're voting on going into executive sessions on the cases that Ms. Wheeler identified, and they're on our agenda. And we're adding from Councilman May's the opportunity while we're in executive session, if there's information that needs to be shared, that that opportunity will be made available if there's information to share with the rest of the council people while we're in executive session.
Mr. Chairman, I don't want to deter from what Mr. May is attempting to do, but I also think that normally, when you go into executive session, it is published on the agenda, same as the other three, in terms of the public's right to know in advance that you're going into executive session.
I understand.
So I just wanted to put the additional negative on the table in terms of the legality, which you may not be doing.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman May.
If I may, we could be in any committee and or regular council meeting, and some could come up. I've researched it, the attorney have spoke on it, and I think we've covered this. I don't want to put nothing negative out there, because that's what we can do at any time in any council meeting, and there's nothing negative about it. It's just a law. Thank you.
Okay, roll, Madam Clark.
Mr. Mayes?
Yes.
Ms. Poplar?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Ms. Fields?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Ms. Gallaway?
Yes.
Ms. Van Buren?
Yes.
Mr. Kenke?
Yes.
The vote is nine yes, zero no to go into executive session.
This is the City of Flint's City Council Meeting.
All I hear is win. And one prime example is Mr. Taylor over on Bent Street, every day. And he thinks that the city is actually lying to him because these trees are not coming down. My constituents that call me, they don't give a hoot nor a holler about who's going to take it down. They want it down like yesterday, like last year. I get these calls every day, "Ms. Poplar, you keep saying they're coming down. When are they coming down?" All they want, you know, obviously, the other side of town, they want to babysit their trees or do whatever. I don't have anybody that have called me yet that want to babysit a tree. They want the trees down. I want a contract in place. You don't have to knock on people's doors in the second ward about a doggone tree. Just take the tree down. If the tree is no good, take the doggone tree down. That's all the people want. That's the calls I get every day. I do not get a call telling me that they took the wrong tree down. I've been here since 2005, and I ain't got a call yet saying that someone took the wrong tree down, that they argued. They're arguing because these trees are not coming down, and the only way they're coming down, they're doggone falling down. So that's the way it is. I don't know about anybody else's ward. I'm just letting you know what I get every day, and I'm letting you know what I've been getting since 2005. It's the same old story. Take the tree down. We want the trees down. We want the trees trimmed. We want it down, we want it trimmed. That's it, plain and simple. With me, I don't know, best y'all babysit the trees, but we need to do something. We need to do it now.
Ms. Fields, and then Eric.
I just want to say that, you know, all over the city, you know, different people are concerned with different things, and they prioritize different things. And I can well understand Jackie's need to make constituents happy and get what they need, and Mr. Nelson's expressed the same concern. But I think we, as council people, have to look at the bigger picture here. And one of the things I'm really concerned with, now, I like the idea of the compromise where we could, you know, the homeowner would actually have to sign off on the tree taken down. That way, you ensure that if they don't want the tree taken down, they don't have to. The compromise is if they want it taken down, well, then they can sign for it, it's taken down. But the bigger picture here is, and I want you to think about this in terms of lead pipes, okay? This tree agreement was put into place under an EFM. And I have yet to hear this council support continuing a process project put in place by an EFM. Council has always said, "No, you know, we need to get back to where per our charter, where council makes the decisions that are necessary." So I would think that council, just like in the pipe replacement, we knew this work had to be done, not every house. Now, some people wanted it done, some people didn't, okay? But at the heart of the thing, what was important was we had to do public bids, because we're using public dollars. So the fact that this resolution does not allow for a public bid is not good. And, you know, council people need to, I mean, I want everybody to be satisfied, okay? And it's unusual in that we can find compromise situations that can make that happen. Sometimes we can, but this can happen. So I'm hoping Special Affairs, and we'll speak more to it if we need to. We don't need to take the entire budget for trees and put it for emergency cutting, because there's no way within the next couple months, we're going to be able to spend $300,000 on cutting down trees. But we need to look at the bigger picture, and while we set aside some money for that with the homeowner's permission, we need to be doing a public bid. We need to do a public bid for transparency, for all public tax dollars. And I really don't know how any council person can argue against doing a public bid, because it lies in the face of what we're supposed to be doing, which is oversight of public tax dollars.
I think that Councilman May is next, and then Councilman Nelson.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, and to the public, you know, I just listen to council people politicking and using words about it, like Ms. Fields, it happened under the emergency manager. How can people go against a public bid? People was ready to give an extension of a contract to Republic without a public bid. I've seen council people want to do stuff without a public bid. Emergency manager committees of three was set up. I went to jail because I wasn't a member of the three. Ms. Fields, you just did rules as a committee of three. Very hypocritical, but that's okay, because it sounds good. My position is this, Ms. Poplar, the first ward residents, they echoing what you're saying. They want trees trimmed and mostly cut down. They get upset when it's trimmed and not cut down. But the conservation district says still alive, we ain't cutting it down, it's trimmed. I hate they put trees in the right, you know why I hate it? Because they lifts up the sidewalk. And so I got so many sidewalks looking like bike ramps where you can ride through them and just shoot up in the sky. And so I'm very let down that the plant don't close, Betty. And the worst one on Bell Tree, or Bell Creek, whichever street that is that hooks Park, Belt, and all them, I'm embarrassed, because it was a top priority sidewalk. You can see abundant, and it's like I could ride a bike and just shoot up in there. And then the other one on Barbara Drive had a barrel sitting out there for almost months, and I'm embarrassed, because I know them sidewalks that trees done rooted them up ain't going to be dealt with. And then, Ms. Brown, guess what? They gonna say that guy couldn't get that sidewalk fixed, and they might vote for it. It's embarrassing. That's the politics of being a council person, holling about sidewalks in the first ward that the tree shrunks that I wish were never planted there. But they there. And so now we got trees and we got sidewalks. But I do respect the seventh ward, because I rode around in the car with Mr. Keeler. And I believe people like to conserve trees and look at trees differently. These people look at me differently, so I know they look at a tree differently. My point is this, I asked, and I think you asked, and it would be wrong, Mr. Chairman, if I continue to talk and don't ask you, could I hear their point of view? Because they here, was put on the agenda for me. I think I know what the point of view is, and my position is this, I'm ready to approve this resolution and move it to council, but I would first ask through you, Mr. Chairman, to Betty. And if you tell me your last name, I say White, Littler.
White.
Whitman. Ms. Whitman, what is the total contract annually we spend on tree trimming and removal? Because stumps and replanting trees is a part of this equation, but stumps don't always get removed, and replanting, I ain't seen, but I ain't for replants, because it tapped them sidewalk. But what's the annual budget?
This year, it was $340,000. Forty thousand of that, we did an emergency contract with Great Lakes Tree Trimming and J and M, because we didn't have anything in place with Genesee Conservation District, and trees are still fallen.
And so when we got 340,000 annually, do you have an estimate about how many trees is trimmed and/or removed? Do you have a ballpark estimate?
I don't have it with me, but we do have a number. That includes tree trimming, tree removal, the inspection of the tree. The forty thousand of that goes towards administrative costs for the year for the office, for the inspections that they do, and then keeping track of the data and sending us a weekly report. They send this report every week.
And I ain't going to trip on whatever the figure is, so if we get it, that's fine. But Ms. Fields do have a point. You know, I don't disagree with folks to agree. Ain't nothing wrong with bidding stuff out. Ain't nothing wrong with bidding stuff out. That's how, in my opinion, some of my colleagues won't admit it, and they call me wrong. That's how we save some money with the garbage bag. So I ain't got no problem bidding it out, but not this year. I'm not going to vote to hold this up. You know, I'm a politician. I'm like, "Ms. Poplar, we got trees need trimming and sidewalks fixed. This ain't the time. September, October, need some work done." So I'm going to approve. And then if y'all don't want to use it, and it ain't right, come to the first ward, and we can get some stuff done. But I'm sensitive to y'all, and then I'm quiet, Mr. Chairman, and I show a prayer and hope you let it shine in. But this is my position. If the seventh ward wanted bid it, I want it bid. If the seventh ward wanted, with forms, where they to be notified, you got two ways a tree come down, on our initiative and on a resident's initiative. And so if the seventh ward in that block, because y'all got a heck of a block club, I'm going to pay attention to you. Don't y'all meet at the Mont Technology Center? And you supposed to pay attention to the people. So this council gotta be smart enough to carve out a niche as it relates to this group of folk. Some of them trees they got is historic big trees. They ain't like the trees in the first ward, Ms. Brown. They got some trees. And so I never knew a tree. I ain't never named a tree, but I'm here to tell you, I can pay attention, and I think this council should be creative enough to satisfy everybody. Mr. Chairman, without me going on and on, I've said what I had to say. I think I covered everything. I'm done.
Yeah, Councilman Nelson, then Ms. Gallaway, then Ms. Fields. And if Ms. Gallaway wants, one of her constituents that was in charge of the block club to speak, but I'll honor your request.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. If I could, Mr. Chair, have Ms. Wheeler speak for just a few minutes on the issue of how data processing and keeping up all that paperwork would help.
Yeah, I think one of the concerns that we would have, or, and like I said, I don't want to misspeak for Ms. Whitman, would be how we would keep all this information inside as far as manpower, employees, tracking, and in addition, like Sid going out and actually passing out the waivers, you know, house by house. And as you're very familiar with, you've already discussed, was the lead service line replacement. That's a major feat within itself with that program that's, you know, dedicated to that cause, making sure that folks have the lead service lines replaced. So I think that Betty probably could speak more to it, but I know that that is an issue as far as making sure that we do it, because if we do it, we have to do it right, and we need to make sure we have the manpower.
Thank you.
Ms. Betty, if it's all right.
Just hold on, Eric.
I guess we need to back up a little bit. When K. Muhammad was in this position, Parks and Forest Street had just disbanded, so we no longer have Parks and Forest. Street maintenance, transportation, assume the responsibility. And assuming the responsibility, we found the MOU that said that Genesee Conservation District had partnered with Parks and Rec to take care of street trees. All we did was expand on that MOU. We do not have the staffing to track the bid, keep track of the employees, hand out anything to a door. We just do not have the staff. We did not absorb Parks and Rec staff. We did not absorb their money. Our funding comes from Act 51, which is gas and weight tax. We are allowed to put money aside for tree removal because it is in the parkway. That's the only reason. The only reason we may remove a tree or touch a tree that's beyond the sidewalk is because it's hanging over the sidewalk and creating a hazard.
Point of information.
Councilman May.
Don't we have volunteers in other parts of the city? And maybe that group might volunteer.
Go ahead, Betty. Go ahead.
I'm for residents saying yes or no. But we still have to look at whether it's a hazard or not. It can't just be, "I like the way this tree looks. I want the tree to stay," but the tree is dying on the inside. We have to make sure that we make a conscious effort. It is our property at the end of the day. Anything between that sidewalk and that street belongs to the city. It is our asset. We have to protect our asset.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. I wanted to let those two individuals talk. I am trying to be very fair as I can in understanding Councilwoman Gallaway's situation, trying to make sure that everybody is taken care of. But I can give it back on Councilwoman Poplar and May's statement. No one yet has called me to say, "Plant any trees." They said, "Take them down." I cannot keep on going to block club meetings saying, "It will come soon. Give us time." Because then you put doubt in their mind if you're telling the truth at all. Is this going to take place? Where I am today, and if Councilwoman Gallaway has said that a counter offer was offered by Genesee Conservation to do, make a call or knock on a door in the culture center area to do that extra step, whether if that agreement was made, and you guys are all right with that, if you can do it, I'm fine. But I'm just still trying to say that on Monday, and I will move this gladly, and I won't withdraw anything, but on Monday, I am ready to move this to council with a permission slip or not. If we cannot come to grips with that, if the department cannot handle that kind of, for this whole city of doing permission slips, if they want to do it just for a certain area, and that's all right with that council person and Ms. Betty, then I'm fine with that. But on Monday, if I'm here, and the Lord doesn't take me away, I am going to move this resolution to council. And I hope, and I pray that everyone understands, and I think Councilwoman Poplar, Councilwoman May, all have said, we're trying to be understanding for everybody, but we have a people to answer to. And so by that, those are those who elected me, and they're looking for leadership from me, and I must do so. And on Monday, I'm going to do that, Mr. Chair, whether we come up with a Plan B or not. Thank you.
I got Ms. Gallaway, and then Ms. Fields, and then we're going to go up and move on. After I allow, if you'd like for them to address.
I just want to say for the record that this is not about politics for me. I know we're in an election year, but we just need to do what is right. And I just want to say as an example, I was on vacation in May, and I keep notes of people, especially with trees. And I got a call from a resident on April saying, "Councilwoman Gallaway, somebody's planting trees that we don't want. We don't know why they're planting trees." Another person saying, "Hey, Councilwoman Gallaway, I got this dead tree. Oh, call me back. Oh, I just got a door hanger." And so what I'm trying to say is, in my ward, there appears to be some inconsistency. So, and I'm saying that because here you got some saying they're getting trees that are planted. You got some that are saying, "Hey, I got a door hanger. This tree is coming down." There are some things that I have concerns about. But when we meet about this at the Special Affairs meeting on Monday, Scott, you've been here 32 years. What did we spend on trees before this memorandum of understanding? How many staff does it take? And I shared with some of the college cultural area, I understand your concern, but you have a financially strapped city. The staff is working so hard. I mean, I can, I can probably show you 15 emails that I sent Betty, who works on streets. She's working on repairing the asphalt because of the pipeline. And so here we got this concern that is active, that is a valid concern, but you want to squeeze blood from turnus of employees that are working around the clock, because K. Muhammad is not here. So they're taking on another responsibility. So what we're saying is, I know you're working around the clock, and Ms. Betty can tell you. You can text Betty at nine, 10 o'clock at night. You can text Rob Benzick at midnight, and he's probably working somewhere. So all I'm seeing is there needs to be some empathy. We need to be looking at what are, what was the cost? Do we have the manpower to do it? Because if we do, that's okay. If the legal department, because I've been asking about this, Angela, because they are saying, "I'm willing to take financial responsibility," because I don't want this to come up every year. It's not going away. So if they, the ones that want to take liability and responsibility for the trees that they cherish and that they want to take responsibility, because it makes their area look beautiful, we should be willing as a city, because it seems like it would be financially advantageous to us. If you got 800 residents over in the college cultural area saying, "Hey, I love this If you got eight hundred residents over in the college cultural area saying, "Hey, I love this tree." And so whatever needs to be done with this tree, I'm willing to sign a waiver to say that the city doesn't ever have to do anything with this tree ever again. Why wouldn't we be looking to explore that? Because if we did that, we wouldn't be having this conversation. And those that wanna do, because it would actually help the city financially. Second with that, the trees that are being planted. Nobody is watching what trees are and are not being planted. I don't wanna play games. Plant a tree! I just don't think that Raul Garcia is gonna go out there and say, "How dare you put that tree there." He has blight that you wouldn't even, he wouldn't even know. We wouldn't even know that a tree has been planted there unless somebody said it. And am I trying to tell somebody to do something illegally? No, but I'm saying, come on now, if I plant a tree, you probably wouldn't even notice until it was eleven or twelve years old, and you say, "Man, I never noticed that tree." All I'm saying is, the residents can help to be creative as well. There is grants, there are financial resources in the college cultural area that probably is not available. And I'm not trying to be facetious or anything, but what I'm saying is, we can get things done, but we're trying to put a weight on this city that we cannot carry. And so with that, I'm just saying, Scott, I, we've been talking about this from April. And I don't want my colleagues coming in now that it's election time, and then all of a sudden, these people have been coming, and I don't mean these people in a negative derogative way, but they've been coming to meetings since April, since March, before the council, before the committee meeting. This is not new. And so I don't want, all of a sudden, we gonna pick it up because it's election time. This, we've been asking for a resolution on this before now. And I'm not saying, um, to the ones whose ward, you guys could care less, but what I'm saying is, Ms. Betty, we, if, if we probably racked up hours, we probably spent like twenty hours in meetings about this scenario. And so with that, I appreciate it. Um, if Mike would like to.
I'm gonna wait till we get all done.
Oh, no, I, you, you asked me, so whatever you want it done, that's fine with me. But I just wanna say, I would like to see details, Scott. You've been the financial chair. What was it before? Do we have the manpower? What did it look like? How many people? If we bid it out, what would that bid look like, and how long would it take? So, thank you.
Just, just for clarification to Ms. Betty, Monica, because you brought up some points that I may not be aware of. Um, when, when we do a contract, um, in this MOU with the Conservation District, do we use city employees as a resource to evaluate the trees and knock on the doors and talk to people? Or does the Conservation District?
The Conservation District does it all. They manage the program. They actually manage it.
That, that's right.
The only thing we do is, if we get a call when they're closed or whatever, we may send somebody out there to take a look and see what the tree is about, but we don't make a determination on the tree.
So, so once we approve funding for the Conservation District, if we had a permission slip before the tree was cut down, it would be the responsibility of the Conservation District to give it. Would not be a resource to the, to the street department.
Point of information. You're talking about the memorandum of understanding. I'm talking about if we bid it out.
Amen.
Well, no.
So that's what I'm trying to, I don't know the difference, Scott. I'm trying to understand what the difference is.
And, and I don't wanna get into it, to a debate, Monica, but I don't know if, if, is it the responsibility then, um, for us to just give taxpayers' dollars to an entity and let them decide how much they pay a company?
Scott, you don't think that I'm asking that, really? Are you, are, you don't really think that that's what I'm saying, are you? I don't know if you're being facetious or not.
No, I'm not. I think what you're asking is, should the city council, or should the city bid this out?
No, I'm asking, what was the difference? You've been here longer than me. What was it when the city was bidding it out?
Well, well, when the city did it, we did it ourselves. We had our tree, we had our.
So just for the record, just for the record, Scott, I'm not saying that we're wasting taxpayers' dollars. I'm asking you the difference as the most tenured council person on this council. So please don't misinterpret what I'm saying, because that's not what I'm saying. I don't wanna waste any taxpayer dollars.
I, I didn't mean that that went on. What I, what I was trying to get to was, we're giving money out of the Two Oh Two and Two Oh Three and Act Fifty-One fund to have trees cut down. Those are dollars that come to the city. We now give these dollars to the Conservation District. And I don't know if this is true or not, because I, really, I've not been involved in this. I come to one meeting. But did the Conservation District put a bid out for companies to cut the trees down? I don't know.
Yes.
Did they?
No, they did not. They did not. They did it with less for qualifications. They did not bid it out.
So, so, yeah, Monica, I can't, I can't answer your question, because it's not our.
This is a question for Betty too. I, I, you know what? I can only, I can only respond from what I know from when we started, just a little bit. Because I wasn't totally involved, because back then, when we started, we did not have Act Fifty-One funds to use. So that was where our problems started. This should be done with Parks and Rec money, not with street funds in the first place.
Right, absolutely.
So when we entered into this MOU, Genesee Conservation District has matching funds or has some funds available from a private donor that match to what we have to take down trees. Because this anonymous donor loves trees, loves the, you know, vegetation, wants it out there, but at the same time realizes that we were so far behind in our maintain, maintenance of the tree, of taking down the trees, that we needed to start somewhere, and that's what we did. When we started two years ago, we started with the critical removals, trying to get the ones down that were gonna fall. In the middle of that, we started having trees just fall because, okay? When this first, when this first started, they did the, the, the inspection. Now here we are, two years later, that inspection has changed. You know, we're not looking at all of this. We're only looking at pieces of the puzzle. I understand that you want it to be bid out. I have, I understand that. We don't have the staff to manage that portion. That's why we gave it to Genesee Conservation District, so they could manage the tree contractors, so they could take care of what needs to be done out there for us. They sent us a list of showing which ones that they sent notice to proceed on to the contractors, so we see it before it goes. I mean, these are based on residents, they're based on city council members, they're based on emergencies that fall when we get a phone call that says it fell. So it's not just one area, it's all of the city. So we're trying to do the thing that we can do the best with the least amount of staff that we have.
Let's, let's, people that aren't sure can get done with them. Yeah, go ahead. And then I'm coming to you.
And that's what's happening when we come out of emergency managers and people who just change policy. You know it, Ms. Brown. So each subject, it takes time for us to catch on and for you to catch on. So I said I'd be quick, even though that y'all have been coming for a while. This is one of the first.
It triggers the requirement of a public bid. So one thing we need to look at is what does that ordinance say about money, monetary thresholds in public bids? Because if we're not following that, then we are violating our own law or our own ordinances. And the other thing I would like to say is that one of the things that's not been discussed fully, but has been discussed at length by the people who have been especially interested in this issue, is putting together a citizen oversight committee that is very much like the committee we use for determining our block grant dollars, with suggestions for how it should be used. This group actually consists of people that have, I think there's somebody with a PhD in something similar. It's part of the group. That, you know, people with real expertise, that they could be learned to, um, perhaps contribute to the specs for a bid for trees. And it's not just taking the tree down, maintaining, it's tree replacement. The city of Flint doesn't even have a policy. I mean, so what, I can go put Christmas trees on the parkways? Well, you know, and that may be great, but I mean, the fact is, we have this huge absence of any kind of policy about tree replacement, leaving the stumps. I mean, there's so many things that should be in this bidder solicitation that we've just not had before. And the last thing I wanna say is, I'm, although I'm sure there are a lot of well-intentioned people on the Conservation District, okay? When I first got involved in this and got to know that organization, this organization doesn't even understand the difference between a request for qualifications and a public bid. So the city can't just hand over its legal responsibility for public bid, bids for tax dollars to some group that doesn't even have an understanding of what that means. So it's really critical, it's vital, that we get a bid and a policy. This citizens group, I think, can help. I think they could help take a lot of it off Betty's shoulders too, because I know she, you know, she's doing six jobs, okay? And, and shouldn't have to be doing all that. But there is no one way to do it. And I think pushing this through, what it reminds me of very much is the state saying, "Here's what you're gonna do," and that's it. And I don't agree with that. I think there are many opportunities, levels, and compromises. And I think we need to pursue those and follow our own law. So my referral is to, uh, for legal, to have prior to Monday, I'd like to know what our purchasing ordinance says about purchasing and thresholds.
I recognize that referral. So, Jackie, and then Monica, you can make your referral, and then we're gonna vote. Captain, Mr. Keeler, if that's what you want the street to say. Jackie.
Mr. Taylor, I am sitting in my committee meeting. We have a resolution, and it's for a tree contract. But it's gonna be probably postponed until Monday's special affairs. So that's gonna kinda hold your trees up on Bent Street. Do you have anything you would like to say to my colleagues that you say to me every day? And to Ms. Betty. Ms. Betty's sitting here too.
Well, Ms. Betty knows what I'm scared of was, uh, the trees need to be taken down because they rotting, and there's limbs falling off of, and after falling on his house, uh, and the neighbor's house, the city gonna be too. It is no reason for him not to do that, and he just let somebody in that ride, and cut them down in the face of the court. So that's what we need. We need to tree it down. Because when the winter comes, they gonna stop up the sewage and all that stuff. Then we got cough from our mouth, and then we got fire there. This don't make sense. And the sidewalk out here is all cut up, peeling and falling over all, all summer long. They be riding little bikes, they get to their home.
Okay, Mr. Taylor. I just wanted you to please let people know what you tell me every morning before I have my coffee. Okay? So Ms. Betty is here, and she knows, because you talk to her every day. Thank you, Mr. Taylor. I just want you to know, I'm fighting for your trees on Bent Street, okay?
That's right, I appreciate it.
Okay, we'll be talking, Mr. Taylor. Thank, thank you.
Point of information. Wouldn't it be a fair statement that the resident can sign a waiver, but they can't sign a waiver for people going down the street if a branch of tree fall away from them? Just a point.
Monica, you got a referral?
Yes, um, according to the memorandum of understanding, there is great accountability on here. I don't know that that's being met. And so, um, I would like to find out how the Conservation District, maybe if they could be here on Monday, to talk about how they've been allocating the funds, how they determined what needed to be spent. Because I don't think that, me personally, I've never asked them. Um, but I didn't know how detailed this was, and so that's what.
So I'm gonna refer to ask the Conservation District to be here on Monday.
Well, not just to be here, to tell how they've been allocating the tree money and how they chose their contractor.
Point of information.
Let me make that referral, Eric. You got that referral?
Could I get a copy of that memorandum between now and Monday?
Yeah, we can provide one.
And can Derek be here too?
Derek Jones?
Yeah.
We'll ask.
But I would like a copy of that memorandum to read over the weekend.
No, no, no. I'll fill Monday.
Mr. Keeler, Monica, did you want Mr. Keeler to speak?
Whoever, whoever they want to.
Mr. Keeler, if somebody from here, we're gonna say.
Somewhere I'm kind of confused here, because we have never said that rotten trees or dead trees shouldn't come down. They, they need to come down. Because there's a lot of weight up there, and there's a lot of mass when they come down. Problem is, is that we were told they were gonna come in and take these trees out. They didn't. Mr. and Mrs. Pettingill right here, our people in my neighborhood where they came in, thought their tree was gonna get trimmed. Their tree was taken down. And if you look in the Knowles Plan, the plan that was hired to do a survey of all the trees in Flint, there's a little box in there that says how much trees are worth. In my neighborhood, Eric, some of those big trees are worth four, five, and six thousand dollars. So I wouldn't doubt on the two hundred stumps in my neighborhood, over probably a million and a half dollars were taken out of my neighborhood. And we have backed this up with real estate people that said when there's trees in front, they can get up to ten percent more for the, the housing. And if there's trees in the neighborhood, they can get more. So what I'm saying is, in the law run in my neighborhood, when my housing values in my neighborhood go up, that helps everybody in the city of Flint, because the tax dollars go into the same pot. And when we get more money for housing, more tax dollars, then there's more money to do everything. And that's what we're saying. Planting, uh, taking the dead trees out, removing the limbs is everything we've been advocating for, and it hasn't been happening. And on the point of, we've been going to the meetings, the Genesee Conservation District meetings since February. We asked them, out of courtesy to the people who have a tree in their front yard, can you knock on their door and just say, you know, uh, "Mr. Mays, can you come out? There's some rot down here. This is why we're thinking this tree needs to come down." It's just common courtesy. And most, ninety-nine and ninety-tenth percent of the time, the person's gonna say, "Yeah, you're right. You're right. It needs to come down." But that would eliminate the situations in my neighborhood where people came home and said, "Where the hell is my tree?" And that happened a lot. That happened a lot. So I'm just saying.
Some of them didn't need to be taken down. It was an arborist to evaluate them.
There, there are reasons why cities like Ann Arbor, Birmingham, Kalamazoo, are spending tons of money replacing trees. Because one, it's property values. Two, the other thing is global warming. Trees eat a one-fifth of the carbon. Larger trees eat more than smaller trees. So we're in tune with that. We want to help out the earth. We wanna help out our property values. We wanna help out Flint. That's why we've been here. We were the canaries in the coal mine. They came in our neighborhood, one of the first ti, or, one of the first groups to do an overall neighborhood, and we definitely didn't like what we saw. That's why we're here. But we definitely think rotten trees and limbs need to be coming down.
Just briefly, it seems like, we, we, we know here that everybody, there are several of us that have different needs. And it seems to me that we need to create some kind of ad hoc committee that can address this, and we don't spend this kind of time. Then they have people from, that will, that will represent all interests. And then as we did, as, I think somebody said how we did with the CDGD, like, we all had folks to sit on the committee and determine how we're gonna best do this thing. It seems to me that's what we need. I can't see why, and then we are the legislators, so once they bring us back together, then maybe we can create some legislation around that. And then we don't have to spend this kind of time talking about this stuff that we, some of us don't even know.
And just before you say something, Eric, the only, the only thing that I would suggest is the finance chairman and knowing how important, um, making sure that we have funding or a mechanism in place if we have a bad storm or something like that, to have trees come down. We, we have to provide some funding, because there's no funding right now.
That's one of the means that I'm speaking about.
So, so whatever we do between now and Monday. So, whatever we do between now and Monday, whether we put an ad hoc committee together, we give permission slips, my idea is, we get permission slips where somebody just says, you know, Scott Kincaid says it's okay to remove that tree in the parkway in front of my house. I sign that. I get a little offended when people in the conservation districts are going out in our neighborhood and telling people, well, your tree needs to come down, but the city doesn't have any money because your councilperson hasn't provided the funding. Happened in my ward on Tennessee. So, I know that for a fact. So, I mean, we gotta find a balance. We know, everybody agrees that the trees have to come down, but in the meantime, I'm gonna look at making sure that there's funding in place. I'm the finance chairman, I'm gonna do that, I'm gonna get with you guys, I'm gonna take in, um, but I see two things that have to happen in the resolution. One, we have to provide some funding in the interim of whatever we come up with, and two, we have to have the conservation district provide a permission slip or a notification that's signed by the property owner, that the tree is going to either be trimmed or removed. And they just have to sign that. That way, when you come home from work and, or vacation, that your maple tree in your front yard between the sidewalk and the curb is still there, or it's been gone.
Point of information, Mr. Chair. I'd just like to point out that we have two tree programs currently. We have the Knowles City Street Tree Inventory, and we have the Emergency Citizen Request, which deals with, you know, a branch that's come down, or maybe lightning the trees half over. So, you can provide money to take care of all of those emergency or dead tree situations without going forward with the big tree program citywide, the Knowles program, until you do a bid.
Well, that's just for Eric, so we'll move on.
Mr. Chairman, I wanna make it clear, through you to Mr. Keeler, what month about did we ride through there in the show? And from what he said in April or May is no different from what he said today. He's saying the same thing, councilperson Poplar, Nelson, and I are saying, they ain't arguing about dead trees and rotten, rotten limbs and nothing. I don't wanna get the people to misunderstand that. They dealing with something that has to do with communications and making an allegation that if I'm in the tree business, it's very lucrative. That's what's being said, and that's no different than what was said when we rode around. So, he's consistent, and I'm always suspicious of people in the tree business, that it might be somewhat lucrative with them big trees. So, that's what you need here.
Point of information, Mr. Chair. I just wanna point out, per Betty's words, the two companies that they contracted with outside of not going through the conservation district were Great Lakes and J&amp;M. Those are two companies that the conservation district contracts with. So, once again, these people never had a bid through the conservation district, never had a bid through the city, and we paid them forty thousand dollars, according to Betty.
So, let me wrap up.
Because of the forty thousand dollars, what we did is we sent an email, or Derek sent a request either by phone or by email, I'm not sure which one, and they gave us a list of, um, the sizes of the tree and what it would cost. So, we could do a quick emergency something, because we needed something in place, because I had trees falling everywhere.
So, let me wrap up by saying this. Believe me, people think I'm highly suspicious. So, when you got people looking at highly suspicious tree companies, I'm gonna pay attention, because we are the investigative arm. But I'm not gonna throw them tree companies under the bus, because I don't want nobody throwing me under the bus. So, we just got some work to do, and that's why I wanna read the memorandum, because we can do addendums to the memorandum. But I know attorney Wheeler agree with me, just because a resident signed off liability, that don't mean I'm signing off. If I go down the street and a branch fall on my car, I had a branch fall on somebody, had to go to early hospital last week, come to find out it wasn't in between the sidewalks in the street, it was on somebody's property, and so now they, you know, dealing with that. So, Mr. Chairman, I look forward to the continued dialogue. I look forward to the tweaking of the memorandum, and even though y'all got some of the biggest, most valuable trees in y'all area that I'm sensitive to, I want to make the record. Y'all ain't saying nothing no different than what me, Ms. Poplar, and Mr. Nelson is saying. It's just that, it's a way to do it, and I look forward to proving that it could be done. Y'all have been the best volunteer tree experts I've met in the city so far. Thank you.
170466 has been moved and supported to send to special affairs. All favor, seven five, saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? And I would just like to point out that there's been a lot of discussion about this, but today is the first day that the resolution's been presented to the city. Okay? All right, our next resolution is 170467.
Mr. Chair.
Councilman Nelson.
Move to council.
It's been moved and supported, discussion. All favor, seven five, saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? It is so ordered. 170468.
Mr. Chair.
Councilman Nelson.
Move to council.
Support.
It's been moved and supported, discussion. All favor, seven five, saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? It is so ordered. Mr. Chair, the very first, I thought you walked out of the room. The very first one sent to special affairs. 170469, Councilman Mays.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, um, I don't wanna make a motion on this, but I'm looking at some of the language talking about seventy-nine thousand dollars as a supplemental funding. And I heard that seventy-nine thousand dollars-
Seventy-nine million.
Seventy-nine million dollars for the first time in the KWA board meeting. And I know we had bonded originally for two hundred and twenty million, and when you add seventy-nine million and two hundred and twenty million, that takes you to a total of two hundred and ninety-nine million. Now, there's some contracts out there that says if the KWA gets to three hundred million, some agreements is void. And so, believe me, I'm starting to dot all my i's and cross my t's, because you remember, it was a final connection of a three-point-nine million-dollar parallel pipe, but now it's been a construction of, um, a, maybe a twelve to fourteen million-dollar parallel pipe. And I understand it wasn't part of the bonding, but I want to see if I can look at that language again, Miss Wheeler, because I wanna see if that language says construction costs, bonding costs, or project costs. But if it hits over three hundred million-
Ms. Brown.
Some agreements is off. Now, the reason I raise that issue, because two hundred and ninety-nine million plus another twelve or fourteen puts me over three hundred million. So, I'm not making, well, I'll move this to special affairs, and if I, if it goes to special affairs-
I won't be here Monday, so I wanna-
By the time it get to special affairs, I'm hoping that somebody can point out that language to me of three hundred million, because I read it. I'm gonna look for it, but I want the legal department to look at it, because in order to complete a pipeline, you gotta connect to something. And so, I ain't a lawyer, and I ain't gonna try to be on this case. I don't even try to do it on all my cases, but what I wanna look at on this one is the completion of a pipeline, in my opinion, might include the final hookup. I don't care who financed it, I don't care if it's financed with two hundred and ninety-nine million in bonding, or fourteen million, that the state pays seven, and the county pays seven. Two ninety-nine plus fourteen puts me over three hundred million, and so I want the city attorney's office to do one thing for me. That language of over three hundred million, I want it before me if I can by special affairs, and then once you find that language, I wanna see if I can read it to see, do it specifically say bonding, three hundred million. So, I would move it to special affairs, um, unless somebody disagree, I can find it out on the floor.
The only thing I'm gonna suggest is earlier, Ms. Wheeler said she wasn't gonna be here Monday, I'm gonna have her try to answer your questions.
So, let me put the motion back, and just wait to see what somebody do after we talk.
That's the only reason why I'm saying-
Yeah, I put a motion back, and we see where we at.
So, I did wanna give you a little bit of an overview of this resolution, because it is a very important resolution, and it is the resolution approving the first supplement to the KWA finance contract. And the resolution considers the following things, the execution of the supplement to the KWA contract that was from August 1st of 2013, the issuance of the KWA bonds in an amount not to exceed, um, seventy-nine million dollars. And the points from the original financing contract is this, is that the KWAs authorize to issue up to three hundred million, um, million in, um, of bonds. Um, and the city, it pledges its full faith and credit, um, um, to levy and have a more tax, uh, properties, on property within the city, to pay and use this money, um, from those who are paying for the water supply, to pay its obligation under the finance, under the finance contract. So, thank you. Um, currently, the city, currently, the KWA has issued, um, a series of bonds, which totaled two hundred and ninety-four thousand, two hundred and ninety-four million, eight-hundred-seventy thousand dollars. So, that, um, also takes into consideration the KWA 2016 bonds that mature May 1st of 2018, adds the seventy-four million, um, three hundred, seventy-four million, three-hundred-and-seventy-thousand. And the KWA can issue an additional seventy-nine million dollars to refund the KWA 2016 bonds, um, and to finance an additional four million dollars for KWA project costs. So, that's where that's coming in. So, this adoption of this resolution is to prove the issuance of the terms for the refunding of the bonds, and also, um, it doesn't matter, just so you know, I just want you to know kind of the impact of this overall, because we know we have our negotiations and things going on with regard to GLWA. Whether or not we enter into a long-term contract or some alternative, we still have an obligation to do this. So, this takes into consideration whether we do that or not, okay? If we do enter into, you know, as one, um, option to do the long-term, it affords for some refi, some credits back to the city, but if not, then we still have to do that, and which we would take up the credits, the credits for the debt service bonds at that point in time when we have another agreement, or if we do, um, GLWA agreement at all. So, um, it does provide for, um, credits, credits against the amount owed, um, by the city, um, under the, any type of GLWA agreement, but at minimum, like I said, if we do this, we should end up getting a proportionate share of our debt services bond. The thing about it is that we have to have something in place, and we have to have either participate in the refunding, or pay for the bonds ourselves. So, um, that in and of itself would be a major feat for the city to do, because then we have to come up with, um, access to a financial market to be able to get seventy-five, you know, seventy-nine million dollars, and which, which of course, yeah, we all know we can't. And just so you know, the amount that the city's responsible for, which would have to come from the general fund, which we're not in a position to do, is thirty-four-point-two percent of the amount, which is twenty-five million, four-hundred-and-thirty-four thousand, uh, five-fourty. So, um, like I said, this is all inconsistent with, um, the timeframe that the bonds are maturing, which is March of 2018. So, these are things that we need to, um, get in place. So, it's either refinancing those prior to the maturity, or we pay at the maturity date next year, March 18th, 2018, and we all know here, we don't have money to do that. So, that's kind of the importance of getting, um, that completed and getting that supplement, um, done, just to give you an overview.
All right, Councilman Mays, I mean, I interrupted you to let her answer. Do you wanna send it to special affairs still, or you wanna just move it to council?
Yeah, because even though I heard the-
Yeah, but I didn't hear where you were going.
And I don't kinda leave it, but I kinda wanted to go to special affairs, um, for Monday, because in the interim, I heard the verbal communication, but I wanna see that exact language that refers to the three hundred million, um, Attorney Wheeler, because I've read, and I wanna reread it, to see what it says literally about over three hundred million. And I know my question's in the KWA board meeting, um, when it was explained to us, seventy-four million, and then it was another five million, I asked a question in two parts specifically, it wasn't volunteer. I said, the seventy-four million and two-twenty million add up to two hundred and ninety-four million? They said, yes. When they answered yes to that, then I said, what about that other five million? And they said, it's up to two hundred and ninety-nine million. Whenever I get to two hundred and ninety-nine million, and it's, and three hundred million is the magic mark, I ain't asking for no forensic audit, I'm taking everybody on what they think. But I'm gonna scrutinize that with a magnifying glass, because if you find any little extra money there, there's some agreements that done been broke. So, I wanted to special affairs, and I moved it to special affairs, asking that that written agreement about that not exceed three hundred million. I wanna review it again. If that language can be put in my mailbox, well, I'll scrutinize my paperwork, but I read, that's what prompted me to ask the question, and then I've got confirmation on the arithmetic. And so, I wanted it special affairs, and, um, by then, I'll be able to see what I'm looking at.
Can I make a suggestion, Eric? Just a conversation between you and I, that we're gonna have a lot of discussions in special affairs. If we are able to get you the information and just go ahead and send this to council, and then deal with it on the council floor-
I'll pull it.
-to try to, to try to come back on our special affairs.
I'll put a motion back from special affairs. I have no problem, um, moving it straight to council, but if I ain't got the information-
We'll deal with it on the floor.
I'm not gonna support it, because we voted on this in the KWA, and I'm seeing it here. So, that mean we gotta vote on it. I do it two places. I didn't know it would show up here. And so, I, it's given me a chance to dot some i's and cross some t's.
So, I'm gonna recognize your motion, send it to council. Make sure that, um, Councilman Mays gets the information that he's requested, and is there support? Support. Is there further discussion, Councilman Mays?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, through you to Ms. Wheeler, do you know what I'm looking for?
You're looking for the, uh, the 2016, um, bond contract?
It's gonna be some language in the contract about exceed three hundred million, and what the ramifications is if you do. And then, the second, um, I see that, then that's gonna tell me whether I interpret the final connection as part of the KWA, and whether it's relevant, because you can't build a pipeline with estimated three hundred million dollar or less cost, and then next thing you know, after you- And then next thing you know, at the end, you ain't fully connected. So I, I, once I see the language, I decide if, um, what it says about bonding or total construction cost.
Yes, talk with you, Councilor.
Yes, I just wanna make sure with what you were saying, um, Attorney Wheeler, is there a certain, uh, deadline when this resolution needs to be, uh, approved? Or I noticed you mentioned a March two thousand eighteen date.
Um, it's May first of two thousand eighteen is when the bonds will mature. And what they're doing is, is the refunding, so it's really, like I said, my limited knowledge on this. And we actually have a bond council that does this all the time. But this is reissuing new debt and basically getting a lower, lower coupon rate. So this is something that you're, you're trying to reduce, maybe it's not the same, but I kinda think about it like refinancing a house. You're getting a lower, you're getting a lower amount. So that's a very, uh, basic way of, of saying it. But what was your, um, so your question?
Okay, when does this need to be taken here by a day?
Really, preferably, I mean, we, yeah, we need to get it there this month. I mean, be- because here's, it takes longer than it looks, okay? To do all these things and, and stay on a schedule. There are certain things that have to be presented to the banks, there's certain things that, that store that have to be told, um, to those who are, are supporting this. So, and so to get certain ratings and things with regard to, to the bonds. So this is not just a simple, you know, we, we need it. But preferably, we'd like to have everything in place by the end of September.
Okay, and what was in reference when you mentioned, uh, March two thousand eighteen?
No, it's May.
Oh, okay, 'cause I do see May, but I thought you said March a couple times.
If I did, I was mistaken, but, but the, the, the bonds mature May first, two thousand and eighteen. So to keep on track, we either have to say, you know, make up our mind that we're not going to participate and pay it ourselves, which we can't do, or we have to participate in this, which well, you know, years ago, we, we already, you know, agreed to, to do.
Okay, I, I just wanted to give some clarity.
Yeah, and, and like I said, the, the amount will not go over the three hundred thousand threshold, um, and, and as described in the resolution. And this is, um, like I said, we have a KWA, um, two thousand sixteen bonds maturing May first, two thousand eighteen, which is a seventy-four million, uh, three seventy. We share, um, about thirty-four, thirty, I mean, just thirty-four point two percent of that, of that debt. Okay, thank you, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, one follow-up.
Thank you, Councilman Mays.
Mr. Chairman, one follow-up question through you to Ms. Wheeler. And I've struggled with this. If somebody missed a million dollars and if it exceeds three hundred million and those agreements that I've read about is broken, what does that mean? Do we know? Do our seats on the board disappear? Who then owns the KWA? Are we out of it? I mean, do we know?
For going over the three hundred million?
Yes.
I don't, I don't know what the impact of that has. I just know that there's certain laws that we have to stay consistent with and certain debts that the municipality can take on, things like that. So, uh, we all have to stay within a certain amount. I mean, I don't know specifically what that means for the KWA, but the agreement was, is that, um...
But if then we wouldn't be liable for the bond. There's some language that says if it exceeds the three hundred million, some agreements are broken. Maybe between now and Monday, we could tell.
Well, I, I can tell you again, the authorization is up to three hundred thousand, uh, three hundred million of bonds. It's no more. So like I said, I don't, I don't think anybody plans on doing anything otherwise because this is what the agreement is for. I mean, there'd have to be a whole nother agreement and, and the boards that would have to meet to do a separate approval for that. And that's not the plan and that's not what's described, um, within the, um, refunding of the bonds.
And, and I know we had that bond attorney here.
Right.
And if she was here, I would ask her, are these interest rates and bonding and everything locked in stone? Because when you get that close, I don't know what it means. So that's why I need her or somebody with that expertise 'cause when I vote on this and remember I'm just a suspicious guy, I wanna see what that language say. And then I need to ask some questions. Other than that, you know...
She's always, let me just say this, I'd be glad to have her or you, I'd have her give you a call.
That'll be fine.
Because like I said, she's always available for, for what we need. But this is one thing in which, like I said, we have to have, have the...
I would like to talk to her prior to Monday to get a better understanding.
I'll ask her to give you a call.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so they move this order to send to the city council? All in favor, say the five, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, is ordered? Any add-ons?
Add-ons today?
No, sir.
Okay, we're to discussion items, it's almost seven o'clock. Uh, somebody make a motion to postpone discussion items, uh, other than those that need to be separated and...
Mr. Chairman.
Not with this evening, um, I would appreciate it, Councilman Mays.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that the finance committee, uh, discussion items on this Wednesday, September sixth, um, agenda be postponed to the next finance committee meeting.
Support. It's been moved this quarter, are there any separations?
Yeah, um, Mr. Chairman, I would like to have a second to look and see if there's a separation. Um, I had seen one earlier and, um, as I go through it, it would be one seven zero four two five. I would like to separate one seven zero four two five.
The E, I believe?
It would be on page eight, yes.
Are there any other separations?
Yeah.
Um, Jackie?
Eight six. One seven zero zero five six and one seven zero zero five seven. I would like to drop those until, um, after November of eight, eight, stop please.
Okay, I'll recognize one seven...
I'll bring it back.
One seven zero zero five six and five seven be, be dropped.
Until November the eighth.
They're ordered without, uh, no objections. Any other separations?
I'm looking.
All in favor of postponing discussion items, say the five, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, is ordered, uh, Councilman Mays, one seven zero four two five.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, one seven zero four two five is a discussion item requested by me to discuss the twenty-five million is labeled as undiscretionary dollars that has been set aside in the state's budget. And the state's budget takes effect October the first. So we in September. Last I heard, the Senate and the House had approved the twenty-five million in the state budget. Headed this way and it talks about the water emergency. It would behoove me not to discuss it before it get here or before somebody spends. Twenty-five million dollars. What is my wish list? One, I gotta call or talk to somebody in your ward today, Mr. Winfrey, about a three or four thousand dollar water deal from a meter where they had estimate. Mr. Nelson, I think you agreed when I talked about the one for ten me, I mean, ten thousand in my ward. You had some. I got one in my ward for three thousand and one thousand. See, Ms. Brown, they like to sit at this table and they say they ain't politic. If you take this seat, if I take this seat, don't believe them, everybody in here is politic. So they wouldn't be in no political office. I'm politic. And politically mean I supposed to work for people inside government. And so twenty-five million, I done said it repeatedly to the administration and I hope they hear. I would set aside three hundred to five hundred thousand out of that twenty-five million to wipe out these meter facts. And the reason I wipe them out, because we was under emergency manager, we didn't have personnel, we didn't change meters, we are somewhat in my opinion at fault. Don't send Councilman Mays no bill for ten thousand dollars. Don't send me one for three thousand. And I understand it's a little E and people should know it was estimated. People thought they was paying their bill. What is three, four, five hundred thousand or even a million out of twenty-five million to set aside to help people who you work for? So I'm suggesting that loud and clear. And I done had Ms. Fisher on, um, Cranwood file an appeal, her and Greg now because when you file a written appeal and try to argue about it, as Ms. Wheeler know, you shouldn't be getting cut off when these surprises come. But then you could get into the appeal and lose if we ain't push for money or policy. We did with the help of your office, Ms. Wheeler. We've now changed the law where you can't go back in most cases past six months. We passed the law. I helped write a new law. Ain't that a blessing? And I helped write a new law where you got discretion and you don't have to put liens on people's property. 'Cause we changed the word from sale to make. I believe the whole thing should be repealed. We are the lawmakers. So we are the budget people. If that twenty-five million dollars got here and set there unspent the next budget year, we could definitely put it where we want. So we ain't just the lawmakers, we the budget people. What would I do with the other twenty-four million, Mr. Nelson? And Mr. Chairman, then I'm gonna wrap this up. This ain't my total thing because people want me not to talk a lot. I ran to be the voice of the first ward and I sure been one.
Amen.
So, see, you didn't, Mr. Chairman, she can't be saying, "Amen, this ain't true," but I know what she were doing. But now check this out. The other twenty-four million, this what I would look at and I'm gonna throw it out there. Everybody who caught up on their bill, been paying good, the highest water rates in the country. One, I'm gonna lower water rates every ten percent. Where the Sabuda was right, he say, "We lose three million in revenue." They gave a sixty-five percent credit, lower him sixty percent, that's eighteen million on the water side. Some people say, "Give me the check." I think people had credits from April fourteenth to April two thousand sixteen. From April two thousand sixteen to now, they been paying for bad water they can't use and they trying to act like we slipping out the credit. So guess what I give? A bad water refund check. How much would it be, Mr. Nelson? Three hundred, five hundred people like getting checks. So I'm looking at stuff like that, but I'm just a council. I'm not gonna be able to implement lower water rates. I'm not gonna be able to implement bad paid for water refund check. But I sure would do it. Remember, I'm a politician. I work for the people. My job is to listen to what the people want. Remember, who was it, the OJs? You got to give the people, give the people what they want. And so some things is fair. Water crisis, twenty-four million unspent. You got eighty million spent waiting on, waiting on a decision unspent. This twenty-five million, we need to talk about it in the month of September. So I done initiated dialogue. Mr. Chairman, I'm not asking that it be took off the agenda 'cause we got another meeting in September.
Yeah, we got three more meetings.
Three more meetings.
And another in October. And I'm putting it out there, twenty-five million. Ms. Brown, you hear about it? We gonna sure talk about it in the first ward. You got any idea?
You make it happen.
Don't talk about too loud 'cause if your idea be better than mine, I could be in the problem. So in twenty-five weeks, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I will recognize this, postpone to the next committee meeting and finance meeting, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Stevens?
Actually, since these are just, uh, discussion items that we've gone on and I don't think there's anything that's too pressing at the moment, um, I would like to postpone this for two weeks, the entire agenda, there's nothing but discussion items. Legislative. Okay, um, don't worry, legislative.
Move to, um, uh, postpone all discussion items and legislative.
Support.
Moving supported, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Point, point of order. Move and supported and what come after that? So the motion that was...
Do you have some discussions for me?
The motion that was moved and supported was to...
Postpone all discussion items.
In legislative for two weeks.
I would interject with just a tad bit of discussion. Legislative is the lawmaking body. If we don't make law this week, I ain't gonna object to postponement. But this should be a busy committee. So no, I'll vote in favor of the postponement and discussion, um, because it's the right thing to do. But I couldn't let it get by without a real dialogue.
Of course you could.
For that, I'm gonna stick ahead.
All right.
Thank you.
Legislative is adjourned.
Mr. Winfrey? Right. The grants committee, we all have, uh, we only have discussion items as well. So I guess I would refer to Councilman Mays and Councilman Fields to see what is their pleasure to say.
Mr. Chairman. I would only make a quick little comment on one seven zero three nine five. Before I do that, I would move that the discussion items on the grant committee September sixth agenda be, um, postponed to the next grant committee meeting. But I will have a separation, but I, I would make that motion.
Support. It's been moved and supported, is there any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to separate one seven zero three nine five.
Any others? Any other separation? Hearing none. All in favor of postponing all of the discussion items with the exception of one seven zero three nine five, the decision by by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Thank you, Councilman Mays.
Yeah, Mr., Mr. Chairman, the reason I separated discussion item one zero three nine five that deal with grants for police personnel. Mr. President, there's been some dialogue between Ms. Brown and Ms. Hubbard and my foundation. You know, they want to build a thirty-five million or wants to build a thirty-five million dollar hotel downtown. And I'm like, we used to have one of the nationwide community policing programs or whatever. So some light bulb came on in my head and say, "Let's initiate some dialogue with the Ma Foundation because remember when we had the nine-one-one guy and the deputy chief? We heard about how many police might be on the street on the shift. And you know, and everybody in the room know, sometime you can wait three, four hours for a police. Sometime the next morning. We need to start some dialogue to try to put more police and police... We need to start some dialogue to try to put more police and police cars on the street. Cause state police will not respond to nine-one-one calls. So I'll wait and we getting closer to entering into some dialogue. Maybe the twenty-five million, Mr. President, should be used, three, four million to put twenty police on the street, call them water emergency police, I don't know, but I would forward to the discussion of putting more police on the street, Ms. Poplar. And so I would um ask that this be further postponed until somebody come in and talk with us, but every meeting, I'm gonna talk about police on the street. Is that alright with you, Mr. Chairman?
It's alright.
Thank you.
Alright. Like to entertain a motion to adjourn the
No move. No point.
Discussion.
Ain't nothing on motion to adjourn. Mr. President.
I have some separation.
Mr. President, Ms. Galloway is down.
Yes.
You want me to tell it?
I can, no.
Uh-oh.
Appreciate it, Mr. Councilman. Um, Ms. uh, I am going to put the same motion, you know, to postpone it for two weeks, but you have some
Yes.
Drop on, given the one that you choose to drop.
Okay, um, we can just permanently drop one seven zero one two eight.
One two eight?
Permanently drop one seven zero one two nine. And I thought I saw the fire chief out there. The chief still there? Um, I had a referral, um, and I wanted to know if it's possible that you can follow up on this referral. I'm gonna leave it on there, the question was, how much uh does the city have in its fire escrow uh insurance, uh insurance account? And which houses have fire insurance in escrow? And how does that process work so we can get these houses?
We don't have any of that, what it is, the city holds the money, the fire department does. Because when a house burns down, the people have insurance, they have it torn down. Some kind of like, the city holds that money and if the person tears his house down, they don't get the money, but, but I don't have any of that.
You don't have no access to that knowledge or no information?
Might be.
We sent that to Don Steele.
You sent it to who?
Don Steele in finance.
Well, leave, leave that on, leave it on. Cause Steele haven't gotten any information.
That's what, that's what that would be, I sent it on there, that's what that would be. We just, like when they have insurance, we're on the special, whoever, finance holds the money and I guess unless the house, if they don't tear it down, then they'll use the money to tear it down. But if the owner tears it down, then they can get their money back.
And the reason why I keep questioning this is because in Detroit, they found out that they had all this money in escrow and that y'all take some of the houses down for some of the blight. And we, they probably could be that situation here in the city.
If I could add on to your referral, I think we also need to send that to Jesse Buchanan and Susan Wilcox.
Okay.
Just get that money in a fire escrow.
Yeah, but if they'll tell us how much money's in there.
Any more, drive, any more?
But Jesse knows how it functions, it won't happen.
So he should be able to give you the, he should get a referral from that.
Well, I sure would like to know.
Any more that you wish to drop?
No, I have a referral.
Okay.
Before you close it.
Okay.
To answer.
Okay.
I'd drop uh one seven zero four four five, page five.
Okay. Mr. May, you have separation?
Yeah, and I promise I won't be long on it.
Okay.
One of them I wanna separate is um one six zero four four three, that's the senior centers. We got an inspection there, we gotta talk about that, you know? And so I wanna separate one six zero four four three. And then um I would separate also, um, you know, this is gonna be quick, I bet you two minutes, I'm separating one seven zero one nine four.
One nine four?
Yeah.
What page is that?
On page four. And then I wanna separate one seven zero four three zero, Betty, because I went on Flint Park Street and I seen some black stuff through in the hole, I made that quick, Mr. Chairman. I wanna separate one seven zero four three oh. And then finally, and I make this quick, cause I done talked about it. I'll separate one seven zero four four three. I'll promise it be quick.
Alright. Did I get, did I get support on the um
Support.
Okay, so um, may I go with it, Mr. May, it's your first separation.
So we voted to postpone.
To postpone the rest of the
You got support, so we just voted on it.
All in favor. Aye, I was just gonna so order.
Oh, well, you got that.
Yeah, but no, I'll be voting, so your first separation.
Alright, um, Mr. Chairman.
Give us the page number two.
I've separated page number four, one seven zero one nine four.
Okay.
I happened to look at council meeting on channel seventeen and I hope that they seen it at six eighteen West Alba. If that pipe is still leaking water and we still debate whether we should fix that or not, my position is clear. Let's fix that and any of them like it? Maybe it should be done after twenty-five million. Okay, so I would ask that they stay on the agenda and be postponed for two weeks.
Alright.
Um, Mr. Chairman.
Mm-hmm.
One seven zero four three zero.
What page?
Uh, page four.
Okay.
The reason I brought that up about the right away restoration, I wanted to follow up when I seen it, I drove down Flint Park, I think, Ms. Poplar, you and I are the first in the second ward, for however long we have it, we share Flint Park, one end is you, the other end is first ward. I seen black stuff dipped around the holes, but the square is still there with rocks there. I'm like, is that the restoration or that's just some temporary? Can, Mr. Chairman, through you, can you tell me what I'm seeing?
That's a temporary repair, what we found out, um, when the contract was bid out, they decided that all streets would have ground put in. Major streets have heavy traffic, they drive through, they push the gravel out. So what the contractor did for us is put asphalt at both ends of it, so it makes it a smooth transition, they can go in the hole, out the hole, without tearing up the track. Until the contract is approved for Zito to do restoration service.
And we voted on Zito, now it's gotta go before the R T A.
Right.
So I still didn't drive on, I drove around. So I can now explain to people that ain't the restoration. It's gonna be smooth, black, hot patch, whatever. Okay, Mr. Chairman, until I see that happen, I would ask that that stays in the item to keep my mind fresh for two weeks, so I postpone two weeks and wait to see what happens.
Next one is to May?
The high water bill assistance program. I separated it at the governmental ops. I'm gonna ask that we have somebody at the next governmental ops. I wanna see if maybe the city administrator or the mayor can come and discuss this, I'm saying the city administrator, the mayor, because ten thousand dollar bills, three thousand dollar bills dating back, I mean, I ain't too proud to talking per and I really wanna talk about this rather than let it stay, so I'm gonna ask for somebody from the administration, the city administrator, let him know that I'm asking for some communication, the mayor, whoever, is he here? Mr. Jones, Mr. Jones?
Oh, he's out there?
Yeah, cause I'm really serious about this, man. Can you imagine Ms. Fisher calling me with one of these on Cranwood? Mr. Jones, this is a, a agenda item that I have put on here, one seven zero four four three. It's a discussion item and it's really sincere about putting some money in a pot, whether it's October first, after that state budget of twenty-five million come in. Have we heard whether or not that money been spent or earmarked for something, do you know?
I have not heard.
But you know the twenty-five million I'm referring to?
Not precisely.
Let me explain.
Okay.
Jim Ananick explained to me, and I think I talked to Neely once too, that it's twenty-five million dollars been had allocated for the city of Flint out of the state's upcoming budget. And um, have you been fami-, you familiar with that?
I have heard that the budget has been adopted and so we need to spend more time on talking about that twenty-five million and how it can be allocated.
And I'm saying, if don't nobody wanna allocate it or spend it, I got a lot of ideas.
Absolutely, absolutely.
So what one of them is, I wanna see if we can put a minimum of three hundred thousand, five hundred thousand and kinda work with some of these um water bills that had been estimated back for three years, cause you know we changed the law. Angela's office and I in the council work and you can now, if it's and I, I don't like that wording on it, Angela, I'm gonna try to amend it, if it's the city's fault, then you can't go back past six months. And I don't know who gonna define that, you know, when we had emergency managers and, you know, people couldn't get water meters cause of personnel, it was before me and you, we wasn't here. I might have been in two percent, you know, whatever. But however, whoever part it was, I just wanna fix it. You know, Ms. Johnson, um, what was that, Leslie and all of them, so I wanna see if we can have some serious dialogue and that's why I ask you to come in rather than put it off two weeks, because as we go into the state's fiscal year of October first, I don't want that money to get away. I've even suggested lower water rates on the water side of Flint credit with that money, rebate, refund check, something to do for the people, cause people saying to me, all this money coming in, we ain't benefiting from it.
That's right.
I'm a politician, you gotta, you gotta let the people touch something. And so that's where we at, so that's why I call you in, so Mr. Chairman, as I know that any day of the week, I can call Mr. Jones and Mr. Jones can communicate with the mayor, I talked to him myself. I just wanted to do this in a formal setting, cause I'm gonna be shown enough lobbying and politicking on that twenty-five million, because I think it should touch the great people of the city of Flint. Okay, so that's why I talk.
Thank you, thank you.
And Mr. Chairman, I would ask that one seven zero four four three be postponed and kept on the agenda for another two weeks. Was it one more?
No.
Mr. President, it was one about the senior center.
Yeah, you said one by two, what page?
So I skipped it, could I circle back?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, that one would be one six zero four four three. Now, if I misspeak, Mr. Chairman, indulge me because she might be short of saying it than me. That would be board member, Norm. But this is the situation, an inspection has come up, an annual inspection for a building that we own.
Okay.
I talked to Mike Ryder, he ready to inspect it and it might get soft because I guess Mr. Buchanan, his supervisor, was maybe off Friday, I don't know if he was off, we was all off Monday, Tuesday and the day Wednesday. The senior milits people sent them a letter and say, if you don't get this annual required inspection, it might cost you a hundred and thirteen thousand in funding to the senior. Is Mr. Jones still here? Oh, there he is, he familiar with it too. So I called Mr. Jones and he left his office and walked down to inspection and put Mr. Mike Ryder on the phone. When I came to the Javale McGee thing with the NBA trophy, I seen Mike Ryder in the locker, he say he ready to inspect it, they wanted to know who gonna pay for it. I said, Hasselbrink and Norman them gonna pay for two hundred dollars for the inspection. Mr. Chairman, through you, the Norman, did I misspeak myself?
Yes, but something happened today.
May she tell me?
If she wishes to. Okay. Uh, as we were told as of last week, that everything was set by Mr. Ryder. Well, we had a call, we got an email from Mr. Buchanan today. And he asked a question of uh who was gonna pay for it, uh
And why was it a third party?
Why was there a third party involved? And he asked another question. So I had my director email him back, oh, and Sylvester Jones sent an email as she was sending hers to say, answer Buchanan's questions. So
Point of information, who was he referring to as a third party?
I didn't say it in that way.
No, I don't mean it negative, I don't mean it. I don't mean it negative, I don't mean it.
Okay, alright.
So, uh, she wrote back that we had had an outside inspector last year and the city was upset about it because of Monday township.
Monday township, inspect, inspect.
Then, um, so I told her to tell him the city was upset, so that's why we asked the city to do the inspection this year. So, uh, now we're waiting on to find out if the city is going to do the inspection because we had such a problem last year with the inspection. And we know that we have to pay for the inspection, so that's where the dilemma is now, but Mr. Ryder told us, just like you said, he's ready to do the inspection.
But he had to get the okay from his boss, Jesse, so Jesse probably okay, but I wanted to call that to attention cause I always leave this on, cause if this council, anybody in the city turned around and Hasselbrink had lost a hundred and thirteen thousand because of a delayed inspection, I couldn't live with myself. So I called Commissioner Nolan and say, talk to the senior people and tell them even though they sent that letter about a deadline for Thursday, don't let that money be jeopardized. Now, I don't know who can or who can't, but I've done my job and I've put it out here. So hopefully the city will get the inspection done and all parties will help, you know, fill out the forms and pay for what's necessary, but I know from me talking to Mr. Mike Ryder, we got an inspector ready to do it, it's just a general inspection of our building. And so all I can do is ask and inquire, I can't order folks according to the charter, but I can show, put it out here to try to facilitate a good thing.
Information. So you're saying that Mike Ryder is ready? You covered your basis with the county commissioner that we won't be uh penalized for this deadline. Uh, did you get a response from him?
Oh, yeah, he say he was talking to Lynn, now, I'm he in a position as I'm in, I'm just a little councilman and we talk to people. He might know what he's saying and I believe it. So I think we've covered all bases and who knows, the inspection might be done tomorrow and we meet the deadline of Thursday. So all we doing is talking, I promise them, if I see Mr. Buchanan and anybody here, I would bring it up. So I did what I had and I can be quiet and that's my last agenda item, if you will see why she's standing up.
Uh, I, now, my question is, uh, if, if it's alright with, with the council to find out if we can meet a deadline of our inspection, which our deadline is tomorrow. If not, what is the earliest so we'll be able to relay that message back to the county?
And the only thing I can say through the chair to Mrs. Norman, we did have, as, as Councilman May said, we walked over, I walked over to B S I, we talked with Mike Ryder and Mike Ryder was all set up to complete that inspection. So now that Jesse has his answer, it's my hope that he will allow him to go forward with that inspection because Mike Ryder has no problem doing it, he's willing to do it. So I'll follow up with Jesse to see if he can get that.
Mr. City Administrator, who is Jesse Buchanan's boss?
Who is Jesse, uh Suzanne Wilcox, sister.
Who is Suzanne Wilcox boss?
Ultimately.
We're trusting in you.
Alright, thank you.
I get you. So I'll keep that postponed for two weeks.
So what?
Mister Chairman, this governmental ops correct? And you know how many governmental operational things go on in this city that I wanna discuss? But you wouldn't be mad at me if I put a motion on the floor to adjourn, but I'm not gonna.
I have a referral.
Oh, referral.
Oh, Angela, thank you.
Do you have a referral, Miss Poplar?
I am. Okay, don't rush me. Y'all didn't rush you.
She's either getting mad about it.
Okay, here we go. Angela, I spoke with Raul today. Uh, why are we not prosecuting the people that he's giving tickets to that have blight? The, the landlords, the absent landlords, and Raul is just about to have it beyond the ceiling because he's writing tickets and the city's not prosecuting.
Says who? Says, I mean, I'm just trying to, you, you say that as if that's, that's accurate.
I beg your pardon?
I mean, Dawn, what specifically? We have a, a district court that, that prosecutes municipal civil infractions.
He said this, that we're not, we're not prosecuting. And that's why he's, he's upset about the tickets that he's been writing.
Well, that's, that's, that is not true, okay? Um, if a municipal civil infraction is written, there is a process that they go through the district court. It's not an option for us not to prosecute them. We don't get an option to say, we're not doing our job, okay? So if a, if a municipal civil infraction comes through, then if it's a municipal civil infraction, it goes through, um, the court. So, I mean, maybe I need to see more specifically what you're speaking of and I can talk with you separately, but if it's.
Well, he's writing blight tickets.
A blight ticket goes to the administrative hearing officer and there's a process being set up for that. Now, that is, that is different. So, but he can still write the tickets and we have an administrative hearing officer, Torsho Feaster.
So let me kinda make a recommendation, Councilman Poplar?
Yes, Mister President, maybe.
I, I would suggest that you would get with, um, Mister Feaster and, 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 and Raul and you guys meet and just give him an example. Let him know something that, give him an example so Mister Feaster can look into it. It may be in the process and just has not gotten through the process yet. So if you, if, and I'm not trying to get you what to do. I'm just saying, suggesting if you get, because he was, you know, we, uh, appointed him, what, this year?
Right.
To do that. So check with him and he, he was gonna meet with me. So he'll gladly meet with you.
Right. And there's two, like I said, there's municipal civil infractions that are already in process that go specifically through the sixty-seventh district court. And then there's a separate administrative hearings bureau that has certain tickets. So, like I said, I, I think a, a meeting would be good to have to, to go over this because, like I said, the assumption that we're, we're not doing anything, I don't think that's accurate.
Go ahead, Councilman.
Yes, if I can ask, who gets any type of updates on what goes to, uh, Mister Feaster as to either addresses or type of action taken, data was turned in? Is there any type of records like that?
I, I, I can't answer that question sitting right here. I mean, we have a whole blight department. So, like I said, you know, and this, you know, Mister Feaster is administrative hearing officer and he's a, um, like I said, although that came through our office, he's still a separate, you know, entity, so to speak. And, you know, so he, he serves in a specific position. So, like I said, we have a whole blight department who handles tickets, processes tickets and things like that. So these questions need to be answered by the department that's doing it, okay?
So who would you suggest would be the best?
Um, well, it was Joel Arnold. So I think he's been, has, has a replacement. Right. So maybe you start there. Maybe Suzanne Wilcox, who's over, over things. So, but like I said, I think that, you know, it would be good to get some information and we can work from that.
Could I make a referral that we have someone to explain what the process is now that we do have a blight officer?
Mister May, question?
I would yield that.
Um, Raul said he's working by himself.
No, he ain't working by himself. He got a person. We, we put a person in.
I thought we put a person in.
Well, he ain't working by, oh, let me settle down. He is not working by himself.
Well, I'm just going off, off what he told me.
Where's the person at?
That he's by himself, okay.
I mean, he's physically by himself? I mean, there's a whole department that's a neighborhood safety. Yeah, well, I mean, I think, like I said, I think you probably need to get more information and I'm, I.
Would a person know if they by their self or not?
Well, yeah, I do too.
This is what I'm saying.
What I'm saying is this is that you have neighborhood safety officers that were assigned throughout the city, so.
And what do they do?
Well.
Do they clean up?
Well, again, right here having this debate is not gonna solve anything.
That's what we talking about.
Right here having this debate is not gonna solve anything. So what I'm saying is.
We need people that's cleaning up, not just going out there.
Of course, of course. But what I'm saying is this, let's get some accurate information from those who do the job on the ground every day, okay? And that's what I'm saying.
Well, if they're not saying how to clean up, they ain't doing nothing on the ground. They, they. That's the problem. The stuff not coming off the ground. Everybody see what's on the ground. But when you pick it up off the ground, then you can see something being done.
Mister May, that's what the problem is.
Yeah, Mister Chairman, real quick, and if ain't nobody else got nothing, when I finish, I'll make that motion through the, okay, so, but if somebody got something, I won't move, good job. But this is what I want on a discussion item on next governmental op. If I can get this discussion item, I wanna look at the charter if it relates to the council roots. Light bulb came in my head. I think you gonna find language in the charter that says if two or more council people meet, then I keep hearing about attorney general opinion. So through this to you, um, Mister Chairman, through you to the city attorney. I'm looking at the charter language, which I took over the office to live up to. If two or more meet, it's a public meeting, a public notice. That rule that I'm gonna blame you and Miss Fields never put in there for that ad hoc committee three. If it's three or more public notices and meet. And some stuff is confidential, I ain't talking about. That I'm trying to use some to say that I want a discussion item on governmental ops. This is a possible conflict between the council rules and the charter and law. And then if we have to, I'm gonna suggest that we repeal some of them rules. If we find out they conflict, they might not. So I want that on the, as a discussion item on the next governmental ops. And then the other thing is, I'm getting very close, um, of doing this. So I'm gonna make a referral if I may through you to the city attorney. Um, Madam Attorney, can you put in my mailbox any state law that talks about a pawn shop not taking in government or school property? If you find a state law about a pawn shop not taking in governmental or school property and what the ramifications is if they do, I want you to put that law in my mailbox. I've seen it, but I'm putting it on the agenda, cause I know my colleagues, particularly Mister Kincaid. You concerned with people following the law, ain't you?
Yeah.
And then finally, I would make a referral. Whether we go in executive session or not. I got information that I wanna find out about this, um, police investigation. As far as people who were circulating and signing petitions.
We cannot look into that in my.
Well, they'll tell me, but I'm making the referral. I wanna find.
We got a gag order, so they can't.
We got a gag order. Well, what I'm saying is I, I got information and I'm knowing that if some folks.
Can't talk about nothing. That's what they saying now.
I ain't been served with no gag orders. So what I wanna do is make a referral and put it on the discussion item in governmental ops to discuss the alleged violations by certain circulators. And for, um, people who may or may not have changed states. I want that as a discussion item. And when we get there, if they tell me it's a gag or something I can't discuss, then so be it. And so on the next governmental ops, I want that as a discussion item. Cause we are investigative branch and I know what I know and I'm gonna talk about it.
Okay.
So I would move now.
Let me do it, Mister May, cause I have something. I need a referral.
Well, Mister President, once you done, you the chair. Let me move, good job. I'll hold my motion.
Um, Janelle, I want to do a referral to, um, Miss Will or you, cause we discussed, I'm just doing it properly. To you, the chief and the deputy chief. And see where we at in the process of this club on Saginaw Street of shutting it down. It does not have the proper license. So I wanted to know why is it still operating? I want it shut down. Not afraid, the citizens and the people that elected me, they're tired of it. We already had a tragic incident right in front of it and so we need to shut it down. So I wanna know where we at with that, okay? Um, all I can tell you is a black and gold club online. Black gold, whatever. Alright? Then move to the general.
That's good, gentlemen. That's good, gentlemen.
Then move to the supporting. To the general, we outta here.
This is the city of Flint's city council meeting. Presented by Spectacle Productions. And underwritten in part by the Flint Pipe Fitters Union. Looking for pipe fitters apprentices throughout Flint. With more information available by calling eight one zero seven two zero five two four three. Or online at localthree seventy dot com. Join us at WFOV for rebroadcast and simulcast of city council and other government meetings. Ninety-two point one LP FM Flint.